I want to call this meeting a word of peace with the mayor and board of commissioners. Do you all rise to the people for the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll bow your heads for a brief prayer, please. Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of the town of Rising Sun. I pray that you continue to watch over this town, God, and continue to lead our members in a Christ-like way. I pray that you will watch over our citizens and those that are in need and our troops that are serving overseas, God, and please continue to look over our schools, God, with all the shootings that have gone on lately, especially with the last one that happened at the community college. Watch over them, God, and I ask this in Jesus's name, amen. Thank you. I have a -- we have no reporting of an executive meeting. I have a public presentation of an ordinance 2015-01, which -- oh, yeah, approval of minutes from September 22nd. Thank you, Commissioner Warnock. Could I get a motion to approve the minutes from September the 22nd, 2015?
I actually have one correction.
Okay.
On the section under Warnock, it was Rising Sun Council had a large turnout for most recent Saturday with artist Tim Jackson and Trisha Jepson.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any more corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next is public presentations for ordinance, which is ordinance 2015-01, which is elected officials' code of conduct. Does someone have that?
Yeah, I have it.
Okay. Town administrator, you can go ahead.
Okay, this is an ordinance that we've been working on for a while here, that the elected body had asked the town attorney and I to submit for your consideration. The -- we always seem to have computer problems at the wrong moment. I'm having them on my end, not up there. Okay. So I'll wait it here. My screen's blinking on and off here. On what this -- basically what this ordinance is, is a proper protocol of elected officials. And this is where I think in order to, I guess, lay all the cards on the table, this is a reaction to a lot of the legal issues that the town has had over the last couple of years in regards to things that at the end of the day, the -- at the end of the day, the taxpayers of the town are the ones who pay the consequence for any bad behavior that happens up here at the town hall. And what I mean by that is anyone who's in a work environment now knows that there's certain ways as an employee or the way records are kept in any business that, you know, there's certain things that you're not permitted to do. You have rights as an employee, processes have rights. And unfortunately, over the last couple of years, we have had some elected officials in the past that have taken the approach that I am an elected official and I can do and say whatever I want at any time. And that has -- that's something that's been going on for a good five or six years now. And as a result, we've actually incurred a whole lot of legal fees trying to get ourselves out of that mess. As late as just a couple of months ago, we had an insurance company put us on -- our insurance company put us on notice that the conduct of the board could be viewed as litigious, so to speak, or negligent. And so within those parameters, the liability insurance that protects the elected body or protects the police chief and protects all the town employees, staff, is only good if you, as that individual, are acting, A, within your authority and without malice, and B, that in the case of the elected body, you're operating in unison as an elected body. Now, what does that mean? That does not mean that if the elected body of five members has a decision that has to be made and three people vote in favor of it and two people vote against it, it doesn't mean that the conduct of always three of the elected body would be covered in any liability. The board acting as a whole is a democratic process of considering a position or a stance or a policy and then voting on that. And so when you have elected officials who go against the wishes of the board in its entirety or against that democratic process, that's where all the protections of the individual and even the protection of the town, and let's remember, the protection of the town is translated into the protection of the individual taxpayers of the community. So when you get deviation from that, there's potential liability. And we have a documented, you know, problem with that over the last couple of years. So as a result of that, the elected body asked us to put together basically a protocol manual. And I want to bring you up to speed on a couple of things, and I sent you an earlier version of this, and I had it in a section of the code that more or less had to do with meetings. If you remember, two or three years ago, we passed the ordinance on meeting decorum and how long you had to speak at a meeting and how you treated one another. The first resting place for this ordinance, in the first draft that you saw, was in that section. But I realized that that was all about town meetings. And so I relocated it to an existing section in chapter two, that's Article Three, titled Personnel. And with that, the standard boilerplate language at the beginning of the ordinance basically were adding language to chapter two titled Administration and Government of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Rising Sun for the purpose of establishing proper conduct of elected officials and to ensure that generally accepted and recognized principles of effective and efficient business management are achieved for the good of the community and to repeal any and all other ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict thereof. And Mayor Commissioner, if you bear with me, I think it's important to help the residents understand some of this, too. You notice I use the word business, and we talked about this before. This is a $4 million a year business. It's -- yes, it's town government, but it's also a business. And with the business, we should be adhering to recognized standards and policies of operating a business just like anybody else. So that's why I incorporated the word business. When you go through some of the boilerplate language, I'm going down to the fourth whereas. This chapter contains Article Three, titled Personnel, which currently contains five sections that provide details and regulations regarding the classification of positions, designation of a personnel officer, details of general duties of commissioners, and assigns the authority of creating a code of personal rules and regulations to the Board of Commissioners. Whereas this article also contains section 2-301, titled Classification of Positions, that is contradictory and inconsistent with the other four sections of this particular part of the code. In that, it exempts, among other items, the mayor and commissioners from compliance with the section, which would appear to render the provisions listed above as null and void. So the reason why we need to clean this up is you notice above, I said that that section talked about the designation of a personnel officer, details of general duties of commissioners, assigns the Board of Commissioners with the ability to create rules and regulations and personnel manuals. And the other thing it does is it sets the salary and compensation of the elected body. Well, if that first section of the code says that the mayor and commissioners are exempt from compliance, it basically exempts all four of the sections afterwards. I don't know how it got in there, why it stayed in there, but it's really a contradiction in the code. So the last whereas, in the town's efforts to restructure this article to ensure the intent of the provisions, the town also desires to amend, modify, and add additional language to ensure that elected officials have clear understanding of what type of conduct is expected of them while in office and to identify improper conduct or activities that are counterproductive to the efficient management and organization of the town. And now therefore being enacted and ordained by the town commissioners of the Town of Rising Sun, that chapter two of the town code shall be modified as follows. And with that, I want to bring it up so some of the residents can follow this a little bit, now that the computer appears to be working. And I'm basically going to give you the highlights of it. So this is the way the code is written right now, section one. This is that section 2-301 that says, "All positions within the town government shall be subject to provisions of this article other than the following: the mayor, the commissioners, the town attorney, members of town boards or commissions such as planning commission and the Board of Appeals, and part-time, temporary, or unpaid positions." And that's why I said it conflicts with all the other provisions that are in that article. So we're going to get rid of that section 2-301, and we're also proposing to retitle Article Three to something different. So this ordinance sets out to change the title of Article Three to Elected Official Conduct Duties Personnel Manuals and Official Stifens and Compensation. So the new section 2-301, which is the only thing that's being modified, is basically a purpose here, which we talked about, which is to create rules and regulations to make sure that the town continues to operate in a businesslike manner. The findings, item B, "The Town of Rising Sun is a Dory Incorporated Marin Municipality and has its executive function shared by the mayor, board of commissioners, and the town administrator. As detailed in section 2-204 of this chapter, the town administrator is charged with implementing the policies set by the board, town board of commissioners, and is charged with administering the day-to-day affairs of the town with the assistance of his or her staff. This code establishes rules that contribute to the success of this basic structure and to maintain positive and effective working relationships between officials and employees." Limitations of other laws, basically this is saying that this code addresses selected aspects of the government of the town, and if there are other state laws or other regulations that would supersede this ordinance, then they hold true. The third statement, or another statement here, is "It's not possible for a code of this kind to anticipate and provide a rule of conduct for all situations. It is expected that officials will manage their behavior in a manner consistent with the rules that follow, respect the chain of command, and behave within the bounds of their authority. It is also expected that the officials will treat each other, town employees, residents, and businesspeople with courtesy and respect in a manner that reflects well on the town." Policies and rules. Policies governing the conduct of officials are listed in this section. Following each policy is a set of rules that gives specific application to the policy. And italics following each rule is an explanation of the rule and guidance for interpreting and applying the rule. And just to stop as a reminder, this code is modeled after the city of Aberdeen. This is where we got the backdrop of this code, was using language in Aberdeen. We also used La Plata and Salisbury and a couple other communities to blend this all together. So it is common practice out there to create policy and guidelines for elected officials. The first section, policy A, is "Officials shall deal with the administrative services provided to the business and residents of the town solely through the town administrator." Rules, A1, "Officials are encouraged to learn the functions and operations of the various departments or to understand the operational steps related to specific tasks." Basically what this is doing is saying that the elected officials should not come up to an employee who's doing a function and redirect that employee to do something else. Now, the first part of it says they operate solely through the town administrator, but at the tail end of this, you see where it says that they want the elected official, who might have a concern about what an employee is doing, to at least direct that concern to the department head, so that the department head is in the loop of what is going on. And we do, as you guys know, we have gotten complaints from employees over the years that are conflicted on what they're supposed to do, and it creates a lot of wasted time. Basically, the explanation underneath or some guidance is basically just saying that the town elected body has created the hierarchy structure of how the town employees are supposed to work. And so this basically gives an explanation of what we don't want to see happen with elected officials creating confusion for -- with employees. The other thing that we've had, which we know we've had in the past, is employees going to elected officials and actually using the elected official's position as a way to essentially undermine the department head or to not agree with something that a department head has assigned. They have gone to the elected official. And as you know, this has led to serious liability issues for the town over the last couple of years, because we've had employees really getting off the reservation and creating dysfunction within departments. So this is basically explaining that that's what that section above was intended for. Section A2, "Officials shall not attempt to recognize, reorganize priorities of a department head or any employee or influence the manner by which town staff delegates assignments or performs their assigned functions or duties." Basically what this is saying, we've had this before, our public works guys would figure out how they're going to fix a fire hydrant, how they're going to do something, elected official comes along and says, "No, you're not going to fix a fire hydrant that way." And we get out a wild goose chase of how it's going to be done, and we get the employees frustrated, the elected official gets frustrated. All we're saying is direct that concern properly back through the channel so it can be dealt with, you know, in a more organized way. Officials shall not retaliate or threaten to retaliate against employees as a result of disagreement to policy recommendations. As you know, we've had borderline issues of this happening, and that creates huge liability issues, again, not only for the town, but the taxpayers of the community. So this language here is basically saying you shouldn't be doing that. Don't threaten the employee. And then again, it also talks about if that elected official is unhappy with the performance of an employee or insubordination, just go back through the department head. We'll go back, you know, if the department head doesn't give you the satisfaction, come back up to the town administrator. Officials shall not threaten the town employee with disciplinary action. Again, we've had those issues. It's pretty similar to the one before. Officials that are approached or engaged by employees regarding work-related issues or concerns of employees will direct such employee to follow the chain of command and procedures for addressing concerns as detailed in the town codes, personnel manual, and directives issued on such matters. Furthermore, the official will notify the town administrator if the official feels that the actions of the employee were the attempt to gain leverage or circumvent the system and procedures in place. The official will follow up with the town administrator to see if the issue was properly addressed. Any egregious issues involving the town administrator will be addressed as spelled out in the personnel manual. At no time will the official take further action on the matter or engage in any further with the employee unless all remedies have been exercised as detailed in the town codes, personnel manual, and directives issued on such matters. Again, not to bring up dirty laundry, but this is what we just went through with this kind of stuff happening, and you know the tangled mess that we had to unravel ourselves from, especially with the insurance company. A couple key points to bring out is that our insurance company gives us protection from liability based upon us following acceptable policies, one being a personnel manual. It's important that elected officials do not allow an employee to deviate from that personnel manual in terms of filing their complaint, because what you end up having is a complaint that never goes through the proper chain of command when it all comes to head and there are legal issues. That employee, although they did not follow the chain of command and follow the necessary paperwork to say, "Hey, I have an issue," they get to say, "Well, I went to so and commissioner so and so, and I told him, so from my perspective, the town was duly notified, and they failed to respond." And as you know, in our personnel policies designed by the insurance company, we have a certain amount of time in which to turn complaints around of which they are filed. So again, this is in place to make sure we don't have -- our obligations don't fall through the cracks when it comes to providing protection to our employees through the personnel manual. Officials shall not discuss any personnel issues about employees with any person, person, entity, or agency, nor shall any official make disparaging or slanderous remarks about employees, offer details or documentation regarding employees' work or personnel issues, personal issues, conduct formal or informal investigations into employees, or discuss or provide any information or documents regarding past, present, proposed, or pending disciplinary action of any employees unless all such above-listed acts have been authorized by a formal action of the board of commissioners. Basically what this is saying, we've all dealt, and a good example is the freedom of information. And as you know, personnel-related issues are not just arbitrarily across the board, something that can be released to the public. So if that's the case, why would we want an elected official going around releasing that very same information as a way of whatever their intent is? And we know we've had that happening of recent also. So again, we're putting this through to make sure that this stuff doesn't continue to An interesting thing that we -- you remember this language from our insurance company. Individual elected officials may feel that they are empowered by their election to individually represent the town in any manner in which they see fit, or to say whatever they want, or discuss any town business they want with whomever they want. Beyond this conduct hereby declared unacceptable, it is also hereby interpreted to be an individual and personal act occurring outside the scope of their official responsibilities and/or beyond their public official authority. As such, the town's liability coverage is in place to protect elected and appointed persons who act within the scope of their official employment and authority as spelled out in the town charter, town code, or formally sanctioned acts of the board of commissioners. However, this liability coverage does not provide coverage for the conduct or acts of an official that are deemed to be individual and personal acts. That's basically saying that if an elected official doesn't behave themselves and creates liability, then they basically have to get their own attorney and represent themselves, and financial damage would have to be paid by the elected official. So we're making that clear, that that's the way the world operates today. Policy B, "Officials shall act collectively at a properly noticed and constituted meeting. Officials have no authority to make decisions or take actions on behalf of the body unless expressly authorized to do so." Examples, "Officials shall not make representation or promise to any third party regarding future actions of the town or of the board of commissioners unless the board of commissioners have duly authorized such representation or promise." When officials engage in conversation with residents, business owners, applicants, developers, lobbyists, and officials of other government agencies, they should be cautious not to make representations or promises that they cannot legally make or keep. Future actions of a legislative body cannot be promised or predicted with certainty. Individual officials do not have authority to make commitments on behalf of the town unless expressly authorized to do so by the body of which they are a member. B2, "When making public utterances, officials shall make it clear whether they are authorized to speak on behalf of the board of commissioners or whether they are presenting their own views." And this is just basically telling you, yeah, occasionally you speak in public, you just have to be mindful of what it is you are saying, because when you are in the public and you make a statement, it is often viewed that you are making a statement on behalf of the town, and somebody can want to hold the town accountable for that statement. So it's just saying you have to be careful. "An official shall not either directly or indirectly be involved in or attempt to influence administrative matters that are under the direction of the town administrator or department head, such as staff decision-making, the development of staff recommendations, scheduling of work, executing department priorities, personnel issues, purchasing, et cetera, or interfere with the manner by which the town administrator or department head performs his or her duties. It is recognized that the department head reports to the town administrator, who in turn reports directly to the board of commissioners." The clarification, "This is necessary to protect staff from undue influence and pressure from individual or officials and to allow staff to execute work and the priorities set by management." Remember, management is the elected body, and you've heard me say this, the elected body's job is to say, "Go to that tree." It's the staff's job to get the resources together to go to that tree. If at any given time the elected body wants to change a priority, let's say we no longer want to do X, Y, Z, the elected body can do that, send the directive to the staff, and that's what gets followed. If you have an elected official circumventing the policy of the board and creating confusion in the ranks, quite frankly, nothing ever gets done, or we have problems from it. So that's all this is basically saying, is that, you know, that initiative is set by this elected body. It's passed down to the town administrator, who passes it to the department head, who passes it to the staff. It's your direction that we are following through. If the elected body, and you have a statement here, "If an elected official wishes to influence an administrative action, decision, recommendation, workload, work schedule, et cetera, he or she must bring it to the attention of the mayor and board of commissioners so the mayor and board can decide whether to address it as a matter of policy." And that's the important thing. You guys are the ones who run the town, and so in order for us to follow through on what you want, there has to be consistency in the directive. "Elected officials shall not interfere with the implementation by town staff of approved projects and programs." Basically, it's basically stating here that project management, for the most part, when you guys say, "Go pave a street, go fix sidewalks, go replace a sewer line," you're directing the town administrator to be that project person to make sure that's done, and that I work with the engineers or the department heads to make sure that the water service connections are wired, drive, or replaced. If you guys want to change a project or go in a different direction, then you just make an executive, take an executive action to change that. But in the meantime, the idea is to keep it consistent, so there's one person overseeing your wishes, directing that to the other staff members. And here's some things, because, again, we can't always take into account every situation. Commissioner Warnock and Mayor Marion were good examples in the past. A lot of times elected officials take the role on these projects, the dog part, veterans part, what you're doing down there. This is not meant to say that those elected officials are not the project lead or set the tone. It's just saying that go ahead and set the tone, but let's not do anything that incurs more financial liability to the town in terms of creating overtime issues or staffing issues. Let's just make sure that if you're the project lead, that you go back to the department head to make sure that they're on board with how the resources are being used. So it's not meant to say that elected officials are never the project lead. It's just keeping organization between who the project lead is so that it's transferred to the employees in a proper manner so that the projects are done efficiently and effectively. Individual officials shall be respectful of the need for a managed professional approach to managing special town events, initiatives, and activities. No commitment of funds, resources, equipment, or personnel should be made without prior notification to the town administrator. Again, the position of town administrator is the conduit back and forth through all that stuff. And what we don't want to have is, you know, things taking place and there isn't an organized approach bringing it back to the elected, bringing it back to the staff and the elected body in totality. We do a very good job of that right now, especially Mayor Marion, who's, you know, doing spectacular, Dave's doing movies in the park, and all the extra things that have been brought forward. It's just a reminder for, again, this is for future elected officials, that we don't have, and we had this potentially happen, if you recall, Chief and Dave, just recently, of a recent event where somebody decided they were going, not a town-related function, they were going to do a fundraising event that required participation of our police department, but we were not certified at a timely manner to make sure that that could be done, you know, that it could be handled, traffic control especially. So that's, this is to try to avoid some of the things that could happen. Policy C, "Town resources shall be used solely for proper governmental purposes and only with proper authorization." This is basically just saying, you know, you shouldn't, as an elected official, you shouldn't be running a side business out of town using paperhead, staff, you know, all that other stuff. And we've had some quasi-issues of that a long time ago. We did have people sort of running different things out of town utilizing staff. And so, you know, we want to make sure that that's communicated to elected officials in the future. Town employees shall not be asked or directed to spend time on non-town business. It's really tacky if you go to an employee and say, "Hey, get me reelected." You know, "I want you to go get me reelected." We want to have that separation from that. So that's where it's basically saying that, you know, you're not going to have employees work on your side business, cut the grass, cut your grass, pick up your leaves, or get you elected. That's basically what we're clarifying there. Officials shall not use or disclose Officials shall not use or disclose information obtained through town services for improper or illegal purposes. And let's think of where that's an issue. There are lots of times where the elected body has to go into executive session, let's say to talk about personnel issues. Remember I said some personnel issues are protected by law, that they're not open for public disclosure? We've had issues of elected officials, somebody or whatever, taking this type of information and going out into the general public, and the next thing you know, it shows up in a newspaper somewhere. That's not a good way to run a $4 million a year business. There's ways of resolving that stuff without taking that kind of confidential information, even if it's negotiations or, you know, things like that. There's a time and place of when the board is obligated to, to release information, and it's not up to any one individual to just arbitrarily go and release that information, especially when it may be done for malice reasons. Policy D, when representing the town, officials shall conduct themselves in a dignified manner in accordance with all legal requirements. When representing the town on official business, officials shall not speak negatively of the town or of any other town officials or employees. Furthermore said, officials shall behave responsibly and in a manner as to protect a, and project a positive image for the town. This explanation goes on to talk about, you know, you need to watch, if you're out at social events, you need to watch how you conduct yourself, because your conduct, maybe you have a little bit too much to drink, maybe you get boisterous with somebody, maybe you get into a fight with somebody. We've seen all kinds of stuff here. That's a reflection back on the town of Rising Sun, so we need to make sure that that kind of stuff, you know, is at least identified. Here is something that the elected officials asked me to put in here. I've had a lot of residents that have asked us about this. An official who unsuccessfully takes legal action against the town by way of a claim, suit, charge, or petition shall reimburse all court costs, attorney, and legal fees incurred by the town if such unsuccessful legal action was not related to a criminal activity or involved the official's attempt to recover monetary damage. The explanation here is sometimes legal actions are an option when resolving disputes. However, such legal actions brought forth by an official are paid for by the taxpayers of the town of Rising Sun. When such actions are not related to criminal charges, or civil liability, or recovery of damages on the part of the official, then the dispute is more than likely borne by failure to accept the democratic process or the procedures legally placed to govern the town. This does not preclude the official from mounting a legal challenge, but if the courts do not agree that some type of indiscretion or procedural misconduct has taken place, then the taxpayers are entitled to be reimbursed of that money. So that was a request that was asked to put in here, so there it is. Officials shall exercise best efforts to avoid the appearance of impropriety and the performance of their official duties. Again, that goes back to all of the above. If you don't act in a professional manner, then your constituents start to lose confidence in the town and what is, and what is going on. And now, the reason for all this is because over the last couple of years, we've spent a lot of time and money trying to deal with these things as they happen, because there's no language in place. We're now, following in the suit of Aberdeen and other communities, you are now proposing similar type of language to address that. And so what is the enforcement? The town is committed to maintaining a healthy, fulfilling, and humane workplace. To that end, every official is expected to observe the foregoing policies and rules when engaged in town business. Number two, complaints alleging a violation of this code of conduct by an official shall be forwarded to the chairperson of the town's Ethics Commission in writing, citing the persons involved, daytime, and events surrounding the complaint. The Ethics Commission will commence an investigation of the complaint. Upon the completion of the investigation, the Ethics Commission shall forward its findings of fact to the entire Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners will act upon the findings of fact submitted to it by the Ethics Commission by motion and vote, and shall prescribe any sanction that it is, it deems applicable to the complaint. Only members who are not subject of a complaint may vote, and it shall require a majority vote of the board to include the mayor, who is also afforded a vote on this matter, to pass the Ethics Board recommendation. That's to cover the fact that in most cases in our documents, the mayor doesn't have a vote, but when you're talking about, this isn't a legislative thing, this is a vote about the direction of the town in terms of potential liability. So the suggestion is the mayor should have a vote in that. The goal of enforcement of this code of conduct is corrective rather than penal, and a progressive approach to curing violations shall be employed when possible, beginning with less severe methods and proceeding to more severe methods as necessary. The mayor and town Board of Commissioners may, at a public meeting, impose one or more of the following sanctions in this order. And again, this is after the Ethics Board, independent board has investigated it and came back and made a recommendation to the elected body on whether there's any culpability on the part of the elected official. So the, the mayor and commissioners can take a vote, pass a motion to fine the elected official, or a $50 fine deducted from the elected official's stipend or compensation, and a written reprimand from the mayor and commissioners. $100 to $400 fine deducted from the elected official's stipend or compensation, and a written reprimand from the mayor and commissioners. Again, this is after, this would be after the, after the first infraction. A $500 fine deducted from the elected official's stipend or compensation, and a written censure as provided for in the town charter from the mayor and commissioners. Again, this is after multiple infractions at this point. And then item four, removal of an elected official is provided for in the town's charter. Again, this is all back to all the code changes that have been made over the last couple of years to sort of deal with these things when they happen, instead of being proactive on it. Item four, the mayor and Board of Commissioners are not bound, however, to follow the progression of sanctions if they determine the offense warrants a more severe sanction. Five, the accused official shall be given every opportunity to mount a public defense of the accusations against him or her. The accused official shall have the right to request a public hearing on the accusation against him or her. The official shall be able to defend himself, himself or herself at the public hearing on the accusations before any vote to sanction is taken by the mayor and commissioners. So that is the culmination of what, it goes back to December, if you remember, back in early September, I gave you examples of the other town provisions. I got some feedback, I appreciate the feedback I got from the various elected officials, and I'll leave you with this, that I found very interesting. The town of, of Greenbelt, it's a misdemeanor if anybody does, any, any elected official does any of this stuff. So in Greenbelt, they actually take it a lot more serious here, and it's actually a misdemeanor for elected officials deviating from policies similar to this.
I'm sure the chief would like that.
So, again, folks, I just want to leave you with this. Part of the frustration that we all have and the staff has, is that at the end of the day, we are, we are all answerable to the constituents and the people, and we know we've had a lot of frustration from people come forward over the last couple of years about the conduct of elected officials. We've had complaints, Mr. Fox can attest to, complaints brought to the Ethics Board about what would be viewed as political correctness, not financial disclosure issues, and the Ethics Board has had to turn them around, because there's no policies in place for political correctness. And so there obviously, there obviously is a want of this from the community, there's a segment that wants this accountability, you guys have asked for this accountability, here's what, you know, we have worked on borrowing the language of other communities.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, town administrator.
Yes.
Any comments? I just wanted to make a couple of comments on this. One, there's, there was some rumors out there that we were putting in place the inability of employees to talk to the elected officials, and that is not the case. There's, I mean, I've actually got some really critical feedback, like if that's the case, you know, you're gonna, like, I mean, I thought I was gonna meet the business end of a couple fists, but, um, anyway, the, that is not the case by any means. This is really to protect the, the town and the employees, actually, in a lot of ways. The idea is, is, you know, I'll just use myself as an example, I'm Parks and Rec Commissioner, we have a lot of projects going on in Parks and Rec, but our Public Works guys are also tied up with streets projects, and they're tied up with issues with water lines and such, and it's inappropriate for me to go down and basically, you know, grab the Public Works guys and say, I need this, you know, tree cut down right now. I don't care about that water line leaking over on Main Street, I want the tree done, you know. So it's really to kind of, you know, they can say to me, well, wait a minute, did you go to Calvin or, or to Ron and say, you know, prioritize this? No, I want you to go do it, right? It puts them in an awkward position, because now they've got an elected official who is their boss's boss, effectively, telling them that, you know, to go do something. So it puts them in conflict. Do they cut down the tree and, and, you know, not take the direction of their department head? Or do they go work on the water line and worry about the repercussions from the elected official? So those are the kinds of things. It's not about, you know, making Calvin emperor of the town, it's, it's about ensuring that, you know, we give them the protection so that, and it, it may be that I ultimately go to Ron and say, hey, I need a tree cut down, but I'm gonna talk to Calvin and say, hey, by the way, I'm letting Ron know I need a tree cut down, and, you know, obviously he's gonna have to prioritize his work as a department head, I'm not gonna go to, you know, one of the guys that works for Ron and ask them to do it. I'm gonna talk to the department head about it and allow him to do the prioritization. It's his responsibility to make sure all the tasks that we have get done and the proper order for those to be done in. So also, you know, there's, this isn't a, you know, of, like, if there's a whistleblower kind of thing. The provisions are in here to allow employees, if they don't feel that through the chain of command, or they can't go through the chain of command, that they feel that the town administrator and their department head are in collusion on something, then the provisions in here to go to an elected official or whatever, to allow them to, you know, voice their concerns. And then the procedure for us to follow is in here. And, you know, we've had instances of that where town employees have, you know, done things that, in retrospect, you know, they were, it looks like they were trying to manipulate the process a little bit, but the, the simple, you know, matter is, is this is to protect the town employees, to protect the town, to try and reduce legal liability to the town. I mean, there's, there's a lot of, you know, things that this was meant to cover, but it's not in any way to prevent the town employees from interacting with the public official, with the town officials. It's not to prevent the public officials from interacting with the town employees. They, you know, there's, I'm sure there'll be projects where else they'll be working with Public Works guys, but only after I've given Ron and the town administrator a heads up, that, you know, that's the intention, that we're trying to get those things done. And it's also to keep me from going to one of the guys and saying, hey, I need you to come in Saturday and work, and, you know, nobody in administration knows about that overhead or that overtime cost being incurred, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Warnock. Do you have any other comments?
The only thing that I would like to say is, am I, I remember seeing an email from our insurance company, or it came from our attorney, requesting something like this. Am I correct on that?
Yes. Yeah, we, actually, we've been told, as, look, to be honest, I mean, we all know over the last three years, we've had, this has just been circling and coming up all the time, we have repeatedly had our attorney from the insurance company saying to the board then and now, you gotta get a handle on this.
So this is when he's sending emails and saying that we should have something on file that we don't have on file?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. All right, moving forward, Mr. Fox, do you have the Ethics Board report?
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, Mr. Mayor, Town Commissioners, my name's David Fox, I am the Ethics Board Chairperson. Tonight, I'd like to present the Ethics Board report to you, if I may. If I can begin, I'd like to start with a review of the process that we've gone through the past several weeks, a history, if you will, by the Ethics Board to certify the candidates for town commissioner. As you know, that election's next week. The deadline for filing the applications for the office of commissioner was Friday, September 18th at 6:00 PM, so we're going back about almost four weeks. There have been five candidates that threw their name into the ring. Now, the candidate forms that are required by our ordinance were reviewed by the Ethics Board on Tuesday, September 22nd of this year. Two, two candidates, Joanne Osborne and Joe Shepherd, submitted all their forms correctly, and that evening, we certified them as candidates for town commissioner. Three of the other potential candidates had missing or inconsistent information as follows. Now, candidate Brian LaShire missed a signature line on the form, and he didn't submit some form sections that were not applicable, applicable to him, so we didn't have the complete report. However, the submittal is still required, we need the complete report. He also opened up a campaign finance account for the upcoming election, but he did not provide a starting balance for the account. As a result, Mr. LaShire was sent a letter on September 24th by hand delivery, asking him to sign the forms that were required, provide the starting balance of his campaign account, and submit the entire package regardless of its applicability to his circumstances. He was given a deadline of Monday, September 28th to comply. The second candidate, candidate Dale Gerber indicated in one section of the forms that he did not own any real estate, yet in another section, he indicated that he did own real estate, creating a discrepancy. He also provided no information regarding his employment or sources of income for him or his wife. As a result, the Ethics Board had a letter sent to Mr. Gerber on September 24th, again by hand delivery, and we asked him to reconcile the discrepancies regarding the ownership of the real estate, and to clarify the intent of indicating that neither he nor his wife received any income from employment. He was also given a deadline of Monday, September 28th to comply. The third candidate, Robert Fisher, indicated on his forms the ownership of two separate properties in Maryland, namely 108 Wilson Avenue here in Rising Sun and 1400 Turkey Point Road in Northeast. However, he did not provide any information regarding the property that he owns in Delaware that had appeared on prior forms that he filled out in previous years. He also provided details in Section H of the forms regarding sources of income, but then crossed that information out. In addition, he submitted information regarding sources of income and business dealings from his adult daughter, which created some confusion for us, the Ethics Board. We also wanted to declare, him to clarify that given the various properties that he owns, to basically confirm that he was not collecting any rent from any of these properties. As a result, Mr. Fisher was sent a letter also on September 24th by hand delivery. We asked him to clarify any ownership of property in Delaware. We asked him to list any sources of rent received as income on Schedule H. He was also asked to reconcile the submittal of information that was crossed out on the form, and asked to clarify the information regarding, or the information provided by, regarding his adult daughter. We gave him a deadline of Monday, September 28th to comply. Now, those three candidates, candidates responded, and upon review of the second submittal from the above listed candidates, it was determined that candidate Brian LaShire had satisfactorily completed all the required forms and provides all of the requested information. Therefore, we certified him to be a candidate in the upcoming election, so we now have three certified candidates. Candidate Dale Gerber reconciled the discrepancy on the ownership of real estate, however, he created another discrepancy when he changed information from the first submittal to the second regarding any legal encumbrances on the real estate. In other words, he had a mortgage listed on one submittal, it was missing on the second. In addition, although he indicated that he, he or his wife did receive a salary or had partial ownership in a business, he failed to provide the particulars of the source of income or partial ownership of businesses on Schedule H of the financial disclosure forms. As a result, we sent Mr. Gerber a second letter on October 8th by hand delivery, asking him to reconcile the discrepancies between the two submittals regarding legal encumbrances on the real estate earned, and he was also asked to fill out Schedule H regarding the sources of income or ownership in any business. He was given a deadline of 3:00 PM today, Tuesday, October 13th, to comply. Candidate Robert Fisher provided information regarding the Delaware property on his second submittal, but he did not list the 1400 Turkey Point Road Northeast as he had done on his first submittal. Mr. Fisher was also able to reconcile the reason for his previous submittal regarding his adult, daughter's business dealing and sources of income, and we've determined that this information was actually not needed to be disclosed. However, Mr. Fisher did not provide any clarification on the status of any rental income received for any of the various properties that he owns, and it was noted that he actually owns two separate properties on Turkey Point Road, but the properties do not have a physical address according to the county's GIS mapping system. Given the nature of an acquisition, of the acquisition or previous tax sale, we believe that two properties were probably likely bundled as one and the 1400 Turkey Point was used as a convenient address, being that it was probably the closest point of reference. It was determined that other than the Turkey Point property on the third submission, no other information was needed from Mr. Fisher. Again, we sent him a letter on October 8th by hand delivery with a deadline of 3:00 PM today to comply. As of this afternoon, early this afternoon, with staff's assistance, Mr. Uh, as of this afternoon, early this afternoon, with staff's assistance, Mr. Fisher did complete a, a third submittal. Uh, during the preliminary review of this information, he provided information regarding other sources of income that were not previously listed. He provided no rental income on Schedule H and asked if he received any rental income. He replied, no. Uh, candidate Dale Gerber, as of 3:30 this afternoon, we had received no response from Mr. Gerber. So as of this date, we technically only have three, uh, candidates certified out of the five. Again, though, we have only had a preliminary view of Mr. Fisher's information since it was only submitted late this afternoon, uh, early this afternoon, and we haven't fully reviewed that. But this brings up the challenges with the current system that we have in place by both the board and the town staff. You know, all of the potential candidates here waited pretty much to the last minute to submit their interest for candidacy. And various forms were incomplete, information was inconsistent, or no information was provided. I mean, these forms were due on September 18th, so that's a full three weeks ago, and we still only have three of the five certif, excuse me, certified. And town staff's been involved with this a lot, so it's kind of taken towns' resources up. They're answering repetitive questions, juggling comparing two different versions of documents, issuing new copies of forms, determining intentions, obvious errors, errors of omission, questioning property ownership, questioning receipts of salaries and rental income, and the list goes on and on. The big problem we have here is that this creates a problem for enforcement because the town can technically not release the production of absentee ballots until all the candidates are certified. So we're six days from the election, and again, that creates a huge issue as the absentee ballots cannot be issued. The town also can't release the creation of letters, letters of candidates to be listed in the voting machines until all the candidates are certified. So again, we're only six days from the election and three out of five. So in accordance with the Town Ethics Code and the Campaign Financing Code, the Ethics Board and/or the Board of Election Judges has the authority to remove candidates from the ballot for failure to comply with these relatively simple but important and required disclosures. This has been done previously, and it could be removed, the names, but it creates a great deal of drama and controversy over something that should be relatively straightforward. Um, it's also financially costly for the town. The town staff has, has put hours into this. So we asked the Commissioners to consider this question, essentially clarify our role as the Ethics Board and the town staff, town staff's involvement in this. Um, you know, is it the role of the Ethics Board and/or the town staff to ensure that potential candidates become certified candidates? We've put a lot of effort in this to get all five on board, okay? But is it our job to do that, or is it their responsibility as individual candidates to prove that they are certified candidates and eligible to run for office? So that's where it really comes in, and we put a lot of effort into that this year. You know, that said, in order to keep this moving this election period, the Ethics Board is again going to extend an additional final request to have these items properly addressed. But again, we're six days from the election and we still don't have all the required information. And as stated, we only have certified three of the candidates. So the Ethics Board has some, two recommendations that we'd like to give to the Town Commissioners. Number one, we'd like to see extend the filing deadline to 45 days before the election and create a new deadline for candidate certification 30 days before the election. That, that would allow us, the Ethics Board, 15 days to review and request additional information to certify that candidates meet the intent of the Ethics and Campaign Finance Codes. It would avoid a last minute certification, and most importantly, I believe, it would minimize the delay for preparation and release of the absentee ballots. The second recommendation that we have is that the Commissioners determine a clear and concise determination of what to do with candidates that do not submit the required forms and information, which again has caused a great, great deal of efforts for us and problems for this election. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Fox?
I think, Mr. Fox, you're referring to future elections for those questions you raised, not this election.
That, that's correct. I mean, like I said, this time, it, it's too late to do anything this time, and like I said, we, we've gone ahead and put a third request out. We're sending another letter to get that, to try to get this resolved by the election. But, you know, we're in the final hours now.
What is your deadline, sir, for getting the proper information? How far out? Because that means you can release absentee ballots, then. That's when I'm, when is the final deadline?
Well, right now, the deadline was September 18th, so that was, that was like three and a half weeks ago. And we actually sat down and reviewed all of those forms on September 22nd, so that was three weeks ago. Um, so we jumped right on it, and we've spent the last three weeks trying to get all five candidates to comply.
But what I'm asking is, what is the last deadline that we're going to give these candidates to get their required information in?
As far as the final, the final two?
Yeah.
Um, I believe what we, um...
Because my only concern is absentee ballots. Obviously, we're six days out, and that's...
Agreed. I'm going to defer to Calvin and the town staff of what you believe that the town can do, because there's, again, it's going to be the town resources here that are...
Well, not, not to speak for the Ethics Board, I think for all intents and purposes, Mr. Fisher, upon review by you of the actual form, I think he's complied.
Yes.
And that he would, we could certify Mr. Fisher as a candidate. Mr. Gerber is the one that we've not, we just, we haven't heard from him at all. We're going to actually pull out every stop we can tomorrow to try to get a hold of, of him to clarify some of this stuff. In terms of the deadline for the absentee ballot, we had the absentee ballots made up about a week ago, but we can't release them just in case the Ethics Board had taken the position of removing somebody off the ballot. We didn't want to have confusion of absentee ballots out there. So we have the actual ballots. It's going to become a decision of do we just go forward and release the absentee ballots and...
So do we have a, so are you saying, I'm, I'm just asking, is there a deadline of like 4:00 PM tomorrow that you have to get? This is it? Because what I'm worried about is absentee ballots. I mean, how, how are we going to wait till, you know, Friday before the election on Monday?
Well, he, I, I hate to put it back in your court, but I think it really is in your court. We have the absentee ballots produced with all five candidates now. In order to reserve the integrity of the Ethics Board and what they're supposed to be doing by ordinance, we have been holding those absentee ballots till the candidates had a chance to get this stuff in.
How many ballots are we talking about?
Absentee ballots? We usually issue, I think anywhere from 20 to 30 per election on absentee ballots. So putting it back in your court, we could just release the absentee ballots tomorrow and, and try to get Mr. Gerber to, you know, comply and just be done with it, quite frankly. Because I, I, I don't think it's fair to the people leaving town if we don't get these absentee ballots, you know, we're, tomorrow's going to be Wednesday.
But like I said, are we going to wait till the Friday before the election and give him till that Friday to be certified? Are we going to give him till tomorrow at 4:00 PM?
Well, just to make sure I'm clear, the election is next Monday.
Right.
So if you're looking for me to make a recommendation, I say the board direct this guy, direct Mr. Fox to release the absentee ballots tomorrow and just be done with it. Release it with all five.
But what I'm asking is, what is Mr. Gerber's deadline? Are we going to say that he just has an unlimited deadline?
Well, it almost becomes irrelevant because we, we can't, we can't pull that absentee ballot back once we issue it. Because you have, you have inconsistent ballots out there. So you guys are just going to have to make a decision to just go ahead and run the election the way it is with the five names. And then that goes back to what Mr. Fox is saying. Next year, we need to make sure we don't get ourselves in this situation. Again, there has to be hard, fast deadlines and repercussions if we're going to have this, you know, this clearinghouse to make sure candidates are legitimate candidates. So that would be, if you were looking for a recommendation, that would be my recommendation.
Shouldn't we, say tomorrow at 4:00 PM is the deadline, and if anybody votes for a candidate who failed to come in and finish this, at the time those are counted, that vote is not counted if it's for an official who, that our election board knows did not complete everything by the deadline, which the deadline has passed? We've extended it, extended, extended?
The only thing that I would caution you on that is, and, and I hate to use names at this point, so I'm not, we all know who I'm talking about, but you have an individual who's not complied. If you get 150 votes for that individual, they're automatically exempt. That's 150 votes that could have been dispersed back to the other candidates. I'm sure a candidate would take exception to that and say, you know, those votes could have been used someplace else. So I, I don't, I think once the ballot goes out, they have to be on the ballot.
Mr. Osborne?
Oh, my question would be, why can't that uncertified, uh, candidate be crossed off of the ballot?
Well, we can do that. I believe we have the, the authority to do that, but as we've said, you know, in the past, that's just created controversy, uh, you know, could cause expense, could even lead to litigation, everything. The easiest thing for us, we believe, was to try to take efforts to get it done this year because we're stuck with the current ordinance as it stands. And that's why we're asking the Commissioners to consider these recommendations so we can try to prevent these problems in the future.
I thought that part of the ordinance was that the candidates had to be certified by our Ethics Board before they appeared on the ballot. So if we have the ballot printed and the person isn't certified, why wouldn't they be crossed off because they're not certified?
And technically, they, I believe they could be. But we just know historically...
Yeah, and I believe that's happened in the past, I believe. A candidate was removed, and as I recall, the, there was an injunction filed and a court rule or judge ruled to put the candidate back onto the ballot because it was so close to the election. So I don't, I mean, there's, you know, you're going to, just on case law alone, I think it would be a tough, that close to the election, because that was, I think, one of the big points in the previous case.
Correct.
I mean, obviously, obviously, I'm fine with whatever you two decide to do. If you want to release the, I hate to say you two, but it really is you two, whatever you decide to do with releasing the absentee ballots. However, I still believe, in my opinion, that we should set a deadline because if you've missed once or twice, this is your third or, or is it third or fourth time to try to become certified? Is this, this is the third letter?
This is the third letter that went out, yes.
Okay. I believe we should set a, a deadline for this third letter that, you know, if you don't meet this deadline, whether it's tomorrow at 4:00 or the next day at 4:00, and then release the absentee ballots. That's my opinion. But if the board wants to...
I agree. Because if, I mean, realistically, whether you mail them tomorrow at 9:00 AM or 4:00 PM, they're still going to arrive to anybody in town, probably on Thursday, correct?
Well, people come in and request the absentee ballot. We, I mean, some will ask for them to be mailed, but the bulk of them, uh, you know, people come in and ask for them.
Okay.
The problem I'm having with this discussion is, and I may be going way out of the field, but what if this fellow's elected? He didn't comply by your own ordinance?
He shouldn't be on it.
It's unfair to the other candidates for this guy to be able to get votes and have the possibility of being elected, and you have nothing in place to keep him from being installed. Am I correct, Mr. Fox?
Yeah, I agree with you. That is the problem that we've had. I mean, we're trying to just get everybody certified and make it a non-issue, but here we are, six days before the election, and we've held a lot of hands all the way through this. And again, here we are.
Yeah, the debate's on.
Oh, oh, the Democratic debate?
National Democratic.
Okay. You're certified, Mr. Fisher, so you're good. Thank you. You're welcome. Um, I think that I still believe we should set a deadline, and if, because, give him a chance. If he can, you know, come in by tomorrow at 4:00 PM or the next day at 4:00 PM, give him a chance, and if he fills it, then he gets it.
Well, didn't you say your letter said that they needed to comply today by...
Today at 3:00 PM.
Then that's, that's the deadline.
That's the issue. You've set deadlines upon deadlines upon deadlines. The deadlines passed. I mean, I try and underweigh anxiety on a candidate, but, I mean, it's one thing if somebody puts in paperwork that's incorrect, it needs to be corrected, and they make the deadline, but the deadline was set. He obviously turned nothing in whatsoever. Why are we extending another chance for somebody?
I think that if you made your rules to want to stick by the rules...
But I turned in my paperwork by the deadline.
He got the same second chance.
What I'm, what I'm speaking...
Everybody got the chance.
Mr. Gerber was given a deadline. He refused to make it.
I mean, even Mr. Fisher complied with the third one, so...
He may have no intention of running.
Yes, he does.
But you don't know that. Well, then he should have got the paperwork in. Because in other words, the whole ethics, turning in paperwork, right now I'm looking at is completely meaningless, utterly without teeth, and a waste of our time.
So he's been given his, the deadline, the same deadline everybody has, and...
He just ignored it and didn't do anything.
We haven't had any responses up 3:30 this afternoon, and I'm assuming that, you know, we were all here till 7:00 tonight, and nobody's heard anything.
Yeah. I've had my staff directed to notify me when, when, if and when a phone call comes in. We were told, I was told this afternoon that, um, the wife came in on Friday and took care of other business, but never made any mention of any of it. But that's, that's what Pam had told me downstairs. And she, she's not the candidate. Mr. Gerber's the candidate.
So just like you said, you gave, you sent him a letter, we're six days out, and it's unfair to the other candidates, unfair to the residents who are waiting for these absenteeism ballots.
And we're...
Do we need to make it into a motion?
Three chances in.
Can, can I also just add from a staff standpoint? Every candidate got every last stinking piece of paperwork. I mean, Brian, you got it. Joanne, you got it. It outlines everything. It's the actual ordinance, what can happen, what you need to do, what the repercussions are, what the deadlines are. I mean, we, we really have been trying to get information out to people so they, they understand this. And again, look, I mean, and I guess what it comes back to, and I guess it's what Mr. Fox is saying, the sort of the white elephant in the room here, is what do you want to do with this initiative? There's, there's, there's an intent behind it, is to make sure that candidates are residents of the town, that they, they, you know, a variety of things that we see issues in other communities, and we've had issues in our community, they're in place for that reason, you know? The, you know, let's talk about the financial disclosure. The financial disclosure, I mean, like, well, we're asking for somebody's employment. We're not asking for what they make. We're asking so that if they're sitting up in a board and they have a decision to be made about the XYZ company that's doing business for the town of Rising Sun, the voters and the residents and the constituents that are affected by that vote have a right to know that that individual works for that, or if they get any kind of money, or they have partial ownership or something like that. All this is done is to create transparency so that we don't have some of the issues. I mean, we're going to talk tonight about Ryan Dry, Maple Heights, Brian's Grace, remember all the conflicts of interest this town has just been choked on over the last couple of years? This is what communities do to try to mitigate this stuff, and that's where we're at. And it gets ugly sometimes, and it's ugly right now because we have, you know, a, a well-meaning individual who wants to service community, he wants to run, but he's not meeting the requirements. So what do we do?
And that tells you something about what the candidate would do sitting on this board. If they can't fill out that properly within the deadline, how can they properly execute the Office of Commissioner or Mayor if it be that position at the time?
When was the second, when was the second letter taken? When was the last letter? When was it sent by?
The last letter was sent on, the second letter sent was October the 8th.
And you gave him till...
Today at 3:00 PM.
Today at 3:00 PM. So you gave him...
This was actually the third shot at getting this right.
Eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13. You gave him almost a week, six days. You gave him more than a week.
Which we certainly would have given more, but the election's looming.
Well, he failed to, the Ethics Board set, set it out and set the deadline.
That's correct.
So he failed, he missed the deadline. So let's move on with the election, with the candidates that have been certified. Uh, you said you have to still review Mr. Fisher's...
Correct.
But he got it in before the deadline...
Yes, he did.
That he was given as well as the other candidates. You've missed the deadline. Let's move on. Let's, it's pretty cut and dry right there. The Ethics Board is in charge of reviewing this. It's outside of our hands so that we're not, we don't have something in there where we can manipulate this or make something happen. And, and that's why we have this Ethics Board. And you've notified this resident? And you, did you say he was, it was hand-delivered?
Yes.
To their, so that we know they have it?
Yes.
And they've missed the deadline.
Yeah, they were also mailed. In addition to hand-delivered, they were mailed also.
So we don't know it's lost in the mail. We do know the individual received it and has failed to comply. So that, pretty much, to me, that says, let's, it's done. You don't have, you're not gonna sit here Saturday and Sunday and then run out and send the absenteeism ballots to people who are waiting for them, who cannot be here for the election but want to contribute. So as far as I'm concerned, they, the procedures are in place, and they weren't followed.
I mean, my only concern is, obviously, the look of, you know, of taking someone off the ballot, but then you also have candidates that are here that fulfilled. They got those notes and they fixed the information. So to tell Mr. LaShire and to tell Ms. Osborne and even Mr. Fisher that, you know, this person gets an extra chance, I don't know if that's what this board wants to do or they don't want to do.
They also don't have to follow the rules.
So.
The candidate failed to be certified, remove them from the ballot, because they're not, they can't be on the ballot.
We're having a discussion. You can speak. I'm not formal.
It looks even worse from my perspective. If we're all human, we can all make a mistake. So I believe everybody should have a second chance regardless. It's easy to have, be overwhelmed with a form and miss a signature and miss something. I got that. You give them a second chance, I get that. You give them a third chance, why? Now you want to extend it again to a fourth chance? Slight impropriety there, or you giving this, because if, if a child has something long enough, they will get it. But how many chances are you willing to give them after you've given them already three deadlines? It doesn't make any sense to me. And it even looks worse at, hey, let's give them another deadline. Well, let's give them another deadline. Why? If they can't read it, they don't understand it, I agree with that. It shouldn't even be on the board if they can't fill out some simple paperwork. Problem solved.
And I respect those statements. I'm not gonna say I disagree with you, but we also had to look at this from this perspective of the history that we've had with elections in this town. And as Commissioner Warnock pointed out, we have a history of one case that did recently go to a circuit court judge here in Ziegler County.
I see.
And that cost this town a lot of money. And ultimately, all the judge did was put that name right back on the ballot. So we tried to do our best this time to prevent that from happening, and we were unsuccessful getting all five certified, you know.
Well, like you said, we did our best.
We did our best.
Did we, when, last time, how much effort was put into certifying all the candidates? Was it the same amount of effort or was it less?
I'd say we put more effort in at this time. You know, take that as the learning lesson, so we put more effort into it this time.
So last time, did we try multiple times to?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we, we tried hard last year. You know, yes, we sent multiple notices to the individuals.
And I assume that was a factor in when it went to court.
Yeah, let me, let me just suggest this for whatever it's worth. When Mr. Fox is suggesting the forty-five day window, I, I don't think that Mr. Fox or the ethics board is looking to not follow through on what the ethics board says in terms of, if, if you're not certified, you're not a candidate. That's why I think we're suggesting to move the registration back forty-five days.
I understand. I guess it's a huge drum.
Only because it gives you better time, if you're gonna take the position of taking them off the ballot, you have a better chance of making an argument in front of a judge as opposed to getting a judge on twenty-four hour emergency call to come in, take that, you know, a couple of days for the election and basically said, I'm not dealing with this. Put it on the ballot, let, let the voters decide. And with us this late in the game, that's probably what's gonna happen now, because nobody has any time to make any arguments on it. So at least if we push it back to forty-five days, you could have a good twenty, twenty-five, thirty days to make an argument on why you take.
I don't think any, I don't want to speak for Commissioner Alth and Reith or Commissioner Warnock, but I think we all agree that that should be done in the future.
Right.
I think, I think the core thing is, is what are we doing right now?
Yeah.
And I'm trying to understand, because, I mean, I, I recall, obviously, I mean, it was during my election cycle, frankly, I recall the, what happened. What I don't remember is all the details of, like, how long, and, I mean, how well does this compare? Because if it's like almost a mirror image of what happened last time?
Well, it, it's a beauty.
Last time was this Friday.
Yeah.
Before the election. Now would be the Wednesday before the election. And the judge put it back on the ballot and said that if the person was elected, then he would have a hearing, and if the person wasn't elected, he wouldn't need a hearing.
Mr. Fox, are you, are you firm that we have, where the ethics board has their ducks in a row with, you know, we sent them this, you know, they, they did not, we, they did not fix it, so we sent them another letter, they did not fix it, you know, are we firm in, in having our ducks in a row with this, with this candidate, for instance? That we sent him this letter, obviously, on the eighth, he did not come in, it's all there?
Yeah, I believe, again, we've gone above and beyond. But, you know, again, you know, we did this because the risk is, as pointed out, you know, you go get your twenty-four hour, your injunction, and a judge makes a ruling that they make. And, and again, that costs the town a lot of money when somebody does that. And so we just tried this time to, to prevent that. And of course, we're kind of backed into the corner because of the, the existing time period to file all these papers, and we've spent a few weeks trying to get this done. Again, you know, I think, I think.
Mr. Fisher responded. He was one of the last candidates.
Yes, and, and.
He responded, so he's on the ballot.
And, and I'm not aware of anything at this point in the game that would indicate that we would not be certifying his, but I have not, we haven't reviewed it fully yet.
It's up to the board. We have things that we have to finish doing, so.
I still stand behind what I said. He gave him a deadline of today, and deadlines come and gone, no information.
Are you putting that in a motion?
I'll make a motion that the.
That this candidate is uncertified?
Yes. The ethics board has sent three notifications with a deadline of today, October thirteenth at three PM, to submit the proper work, paperwork so he could be certified and failed to do so. So I motion that that candidate be removed from the absentee ballots, as well as the official ballot on election day.
I'll second for discussion, because I have one last question.
Okay, go.
With last time, did the, like, this time, we actually have a candidate that didn't turn paperwork in by the deadline, by the third deadline, like, the third chance. Was it the same last time, or was it just they turned paperwork in, there were still mistakes?
I don't remember all the details from it, to be honest.
Because I think that's a distinction.
The last, the last time the candidate essentially refused to answer a question. Yes, the paperwork was submitted. We actually brought the candidate in to have a conversation, and when we asked for the information specifically, if I recall, the candidate got up and left the meeting.
That's correct. I do remember that.
And just, and so at that point, you know, the ethics board, you know, basically said, that's it, we're, we're gonna have to remove him from the ballot.
But it would be fair to say that they at least made some effort to comply, they just refused to answer a final question?
Yeah, yeah, generally that.
Versus, versus actual?
Yeah.
Not turning in the final, by the final deadline, the final packet?
Okay. Do you want me to call the vote?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Mr. Fox, I also wanted to say, and I know I probably speak for the entire board when I say this, thank you for all your hard work on the ethics board. People don't realize that it is a volunteer position, and for all the ethics members that donate their time, thank you. Because I, I personally filled out this paperwork, I know that everyone else has, we've all had questions about it, but it is, you know, we're following a state mandate, so thank you.
Correct. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Chief, can I get citizens' input?
Hi, I go on.
Thank you.
Ms. Maynard, you're first. It's good. Okay. I do appreciate they got the lines painted down in the village. It looks very nice. But I'm gonna bring up the parking issue again. Last night, they were on both sides of the street. If there is a fire, if there is an ambulance call, there is no way that that vehicle can get down in there.
Is this for the new business that just started down there?
Yes, and it's not like I don't want that business near it. It's not what I'm saying. I'm thinking of the safety of the people that's in that development. I'm not saying, you know, if, is there a way we can stop them parking on both sides so at least it's wide enough for fire equipment or an ambulance, whatever needs to get in there.
Chief, could you, maybe the next time that we have, you know, an event going on there, maybe we could send a patrol car down there to kind of look into it?
And this wasn't Monday eve, what's the date today? Yeah, it was Monday. Yeah, because now they have Mondays and they have them on Wednesdays.
Yeah, I mean, is this something, Commissioner Alth, maybe we look at trying to get no parking signs up?
Well, let's, let's chief look at it, have his, his guys look at it first and, and come back to us with a recommendation. I think that'd be the best way to, to achieve.
That's right.
All right, Ms. Maynard, we'll definitely look at it.
It's not that I'm, it's not, like I said, the business is great, but it's just, it's a safety issue for some of them. And what about the school bus driveway? Can they, or are they allowed to park in there since school was not, you know, the school's not in session in the evening?
Are they parking in there too?
No, they aren't. But it, could that be a possibility?
I, so, my recollection of the agreement with the original property owner is that it's only to be used for the school bus. Because if you remember, that's why that owner sometimes complains about people using it.
See, I don't know who owns that, so I don't, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, I believe the original agreement with the town is that that can only be used for the ingress and egress of the bus. Chief, you might know better, but that's my recollection.
I actually don't, but we can find out.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maynard. Mr. Fox, you also had a yes. Do you have anything?
No.
It was just that? Okay. Just, just confirming. Okay. Mr. Smith?
Good evening. First off, I, I just want to tell you, as president of Brian's Grace HCUA, what a pleasure it is to work with this current administration. Unlike prior administrations who had their own personal objective and really didn't care about the town, you guys are on the ball. I came in here, told you about the sewage issue, the road caving in. Within three days, you guys were out there doing your job and got it completed. I can't tell you how that much that means to the community, especially with all the little kids that we have over there. We, I'm serious, we've probably got forty kids under the age of eleven. Anyway, great job. Thank you very much. Look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Bill, a lot of, a lot of things goes to Ron and his guys for getting out there and doing it, realizing, you know, we just kind of let them know, and they went out and seen how bad it was, and, and Ron and his public works guys went out there and seen how bad it was and knocked it out, knowing the safety issue. So don't thank, thank them guys.
Yeah, but you guys made it happen. And seriously, within three days.
We appreciate it, but.
It was like in the works, within five days it was done, and the barricades were out. So I can't thank you guys enough.
Well, I don't think Commissioner Alth and Reith would say this about himself, but he's very proactive. Obviously, he was out in that community. And if he knows about an issue, he's gonna certainly be there. But the key thing is to let him know about the issue, because if he doesn't know about it, he can't go out there and look into it, so.
Like I said, Ron, Ron and his guys are the real unsung heroes about this thing, to get out there and get it done, and even right down to.
We don't, we don't.
Don't forget them.
Put people enough into this environment because of everybody's instant gratification.
Right.
But I wanted to thank you guys.
Thank you.
And tell you what a great job you did in our community.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you and your wife out here tonight. Appreciate it.
Ms. Osborne?
I am, I am. Joanne Osborne. I thought the discussion was very interesting about the person who's not yet been certified. My question on that would be, who is responsible for notifying that person that their name has been removed from the ballot?
I'm guessing the ethics board will probably put together a final statement, and then you'll hand-deliver it, more than likely.
The other question was gonna be directed at Calvin, but I'll save it for another meeting.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, by the way, the Cinderella movie was great. My grandson had a ball, but he didn't watch the movie at all.
Hey, that's good.
I enjoyed it.
Hey, I mean, the, one of the things that you may not say about yourself is you're one of the people that voted for that program, so thank you for supporting it. Mr. Fisher is not here, obviously, he needed to go to the debate, so. And Mr. Mommy, you had a no. Is there anything?
Yeah, just quickly. As everybody knows, the Civil War reenactment was canceled because of weather, and, believe me, I'm glad it was. That place was a wet, wet area. Anyway, it's been rescheduled and will take place the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth of this month, on that weekend. The only thing I might add is we had to make some adjustments on some of the events that deal with the feeding of the troops while they're here. We're not gonna be able to provide a facility for breakfast and, and dinner, other than that we will be providing dinner on Saturday evening. We need, we need people to serve it because our contractor won't be able to serve. They've got another commitment with another event that's in town, and therefore, we got put on the back burner, although I think both affairs will complement each other, and so we're not too upset about that. But we, if there's anybody that wants to check with us and see if we could use your hand in dishing out some mashed potatoes or something, let, let me know. Other than that, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mommy. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Hearing none, I'm gonna move into the chief's report.
As I stated in the last meeting, the method and way we tabulate, you know, collect the data for our town meeting has changed a tad bit, so what we've done is changed our presentation for you all. And what I'm going to do from here on out is to outline the communities that we've gotten major complaints from. Before I start that, I would like to say to Mr. Smith, Brian's Grace is one of the communities that we've gotten complaints from, but the type of complaint would not allow me to put it in this fashion.
I understand. I know what you're talking about.
So, first off, there's three hundred and forty calls for services that we responded to during the two-week period, ending, beginning September twenty-ninth until today. First up, Valley View. We received a complaint of vehicles failing to stop at the stop sign and drug activity. As of this date, for that two-week period, we've put in approximately ten man-hours of foot patrol, made seventeen community contacts. Zero citations have been written. However, we have written one warning. The amount of abandoned vehicles and unregistered vehicles has completely diminished, and that may have been a result of the street painting, but it's no longer an issue at this Reynolds Avenue. We received a complaint there of excessive dog noise, vehicles skidding and spinning wheels, also four-wheelers and dirt bikes running up and down the road. We've increased patrols in that area. It's approximately eighty-four patrol checks have been conducted on that roadway in that area, and as of this date, we have not found any evidence of skidding and spinning wheels. And the excessive dog noise, those people that were pointing out to us have been notified of the potential violations that they're, they're committing. Broadleaf Court, speeding complaint. What I should note is, in the bottom right corner, you'll see a map of the area, and this one is an interesting issue here. We have speeding. That roadway is approximately three hundred feet long. However, you know, you can get a vehicle up above twenty-five miles per hour, and we will take it seriously and take a look at it. We've placed decoy vehicles down there just to see if we can slow traffic down any. We've had eight hours of stationary speed enforcement. We've issued no citations, no warnings.
Chief, I just want to note that it was nobody from the elected body that requested this, so that there's.
Correct. It was nobody from the elected body, correct?
Am I to confirm or deny?
You were to confirm that.
Be truthful.
Yes. No one from the elected body requested this. No one from the elected body requested this.
And it wasn't about any of us doing that?
Should I cross my fingers and toes right now? No, you were not the target of this. West Main Street at Harrington Drive. We recently received a complaint of vehicles passing to stop school buses. This happens also at the intersection of Maple Heights Lane and East Main Street. Although it's not highlighted today, it is one of our target areas. With this one, we've put in six hours of monitoring traffic and issued one citation. I've got to note that once we got in that area, some of the businesses weren't very cooperative with marked police cars. We've found ways to get out and reduce the speed of traffic and be visible and help, you know, for this type of complaint to not occur again. Keppel's Mill Court. Parking complaints near the corner and the sightline problems. Warning letters have been mailed to those people that we've found relatively close to the areas where the parking is occurring. And we've increased speed, you know, monitoring on Mount Street along with increased patrols of Keppel's Mill Court. Also, Keppel's Mill has added on that there is a speed problem there. But again, I've got to indicate that this roadway is about 200 feet long. It has been a very interesting week or two weeks for Cecil County Schools with the threat level being raised because of a former resident of Cecil County making threats while he was in California. We spent quite a bit of time at the middle school to try to calm fears, reduce the anxiety of kids and parents. We've spent 26 hours of patrol. We've also had eighteen hours of dare during those two-week periods. Two hours of parking enforcement for special events and five hours of the emergency standby while the code yellow was in force. Minus the five hours and the eighteen hours of dare, you will probably still see about 26 to 30 hours of man-hours we put into the school, no matter what. Our presence is very important. It's one of the main things that we do in the Police Department, because it does multiple things. It helps the kids develop a comfort level with law enforcement. It also helps reduce problems with the kids in school. And it helps reduce problems that come to the school and from outside sources. So, we tend to spend a lot of time there to deal with the children. During that two-week period, we've had four heroin arrests, one shoplifting arrest, two assault arrests, and one fugitive from Wycomical County. We've issued five under the influence-related citation. Two of them were arrests. And that's a little confusing to some, because those five citations are divided amongst two people. Those are different types of charges that we have to apply in those circumstances. But those five are for those two arrests. In addition, we've issued five citations for equipment repairs, three for suspended drivers, one for no license, one for negligent driving, and four for other motor vehicle moving violations. And traffic warnings, we had four for speed, five parking, six for equipment violations, and sixteen warnings for moving violations. This is going to be the normal for the report, and it may even become, you know, even more expanded to outline what we do and how we do it, where are we doing it, so that most people can understand that when you make a complaint to us, it's not going to, you know, fall on deaf ears, or you may not hear a result, you will hear the result now. Because this is how we're going to outline each issue when it comes to us from a neighborhood.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Chief, yes. Question on your report, because I just don't know.
Okay.
Under nature of description, park gate, what does that mean when-
I saw that earlier, and that may be a dispatcher issue. What Commissioner Althanreath was referring to, he has a summary of every single call that we've gone on for those two-week period. In the calls, you'll see a list of nature of descriptions. There's one listed as park gate. I'm not sure what that is. And I have to find out myself, because that's not terminology we use. So, we're going to find out what it is. And it, there's no park on North Walnut. Or-
2,500-
2,500 block-
Thought it might have been the sewer.
It could be the sewer.
There's a few of them. There's, I'm noticing there's like four or five.
You know, it could be park. When you say North Walnut, it could be the dog park. So, I've got to look at that and get the wording correct, but that appears multiple times. And it may be just a patrol check of those locations.
If you could shoot us an email, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, I sure will.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Town Administrator, do you have a report this evening? No report?
You know it. The first item that I want to bring you up to speed on is Ryan Drive. The paving of Ryan Drive or the restoration of Ryan Drive. We got the bids back for Ryan Drive, and they came back even higher than what the engineer had estimated. You have the engineer's recommendation letter. The price to fix, and what I want people to see is, up here is Sunrise Circle here. We're talking about fixing this stretch of land that we erode, that we've been talking about since last February, that did not have adequate subbase underneath it. The road clearly wasn't put in properly. I think Commissioner Althanreath has some follow-up comments on that under his report. The price to repair that came in at $569,731.25. To put that in perspective, the town collects, would we say, $780,000, $800,000 of real estate tax. And this goes back to the thing I've been frustrated about for the longest time. All that wasted money that's gone out the door on legal stuff. This is where it's really hurting us here, because we've got a cost to fix a development that never should have been constructed the way it was in the first place here. And so, the cost is $569,731.25. However, when we got the high price back, I had the engineer go back to the bidder, and we only had one bid on the project. I had him go back to the bidder to see if there were any things that were, because of the nature of this repair, that the contractor was being potentially overly concerned about. And one of the things of concern is given, you know, our concerns about the way the road was constructed, there is a concern that once he gets in there and starts digging, that the underbody of the road is going to be in worse shape than what we have anticipated. And again, I can't say this enough. When you build a road, you compact the earth. You put a nice thick layer of heavy stone in there. You tamp that down. There's certain compaction variables that have to be met. None of that was done, at least not done to the satisfaction of the engineer at that time, that Mr. Althanreath has some comments on later. So, what we basically have to do in order to build it right is go back in there and take about 12 inches of the road out of there, put that stone bed in there that was never put in there, put a base coat of blacktop over that, and then a wear coat on top of that. And we, even with our proposal looking to do that, we were basically saying, we'll take a chance that the eight-inch water line in the street is not bad. Because quite conceivably, we probably would have been up over a million dollars if we would have tried to replace the water line just in that section alone. So, with the engineer, going back to the contractor, we were able to get him to revise his price with additional information down to $466,731.25. If you recall, we were hoping to get grant money from USDA. And USDA solicited us to put in for a grant for this. However, and I say this tongue-in-cheek, and people think I'm being insensitive, but it's what, it's what other agencies basically say, is that our water and sewer rates are not high enough to justify grant monies from those agencies. And so, we don't qualify for grants. We qualify for low-interest loans, but we're going to be taking, having the taxpayers pay, you know, almost a half a million dollars for the next forty years on top of other loans that have been taken out. And so, it's getting a little frustrating here, but that's what we're dealing with. There was another alternative in the engineer's report that I had asked him to put in there, in that let's hypothetically, to me, the biggest concern the residents have up there is potholes in the war zone that it looks like they're driving through. So, one approach we could take would be to just put a top coat over all of that. Don't worry about the water service connections. Don't worry about rebuilding the road underneath it. Just put a top coat on it and then reapply to USDA next year and see if we can get the grant money to do it completely right. The cost of that is just under $50,000 to put a top coat over it. The problem with that is that we really are gambling that there aren't any more service connections up there. We're gambling that the road underneath, which quite frankly, we know is not in the best shape, only has a Band-Aid on it. We would be gambling that that will survive another winter. And we've already seen, you know, remember the damage we talked about? We have water service connections that break in this town. Your house is supplied by a three-quarter inch water service connection. We have services that break in this town, and you see them, Joanne, you know this by now, on Cherry Street. It comes up out of the blacktop. We see the water. We come out and dig it. That's it. You guys saw Ryan Drive? I mean, it looked like somebody bombed it, like it was an airstrip and somebody bombed it. Just that three-quarter inch service connection went through all that inadequate base underneath it and just eroded the street out and created all that stuff up there. So, we really would be gambling if we just put the $49,000 cap on it. So, the recommendation that you have from the engineer is to proceed with the current bid price of $466,731.25. What this will do is rebuild the road, as we talked about, from Sunrise Circle, the intersection there, all the way back up to the cul-de-sac here. And it will replace the remaining water service connections that were not replaced yet. It will not touch the eight-inch main, but at least it will put the road back to the way it needs to be. And now, one of the things that I'm concerned about is that, once we get in there, and this is where we're going to have to be honest with the residents of Ryan Drive, is that the window to get this is rather tight. Because, you know, we applied for USDA with the idea we were getting grants. They didn't give us grants. There's a long process of applying. So, here we are up against that window of the blacktop pet plant's paving. We don't know how bad the damage is on that road. So, we can get in there and start doing repairs, and the contractor and the engineer can come back and say, this is a lot worse than what we thought here. Which means that I've asked the contractor to be open before I recommend you guys to do anything. I've asked the contractor to confirm that if we get in there and the damage is worse, we'll fix that immediate damage. We'll put an overlay over it and then get back out there in the springtime and just totally redo the road. Because my concern is, if we get out there, let's say, the end of October, find the major issue and fix that, and then continue, we'll find another one. We'd be sitting here in December, January, February, just tearing the road up even more and not being able to restore it, you know, properly. So, the contractor and the engineer have assured us that they are fine with that, that if we get into it and it's really bad, we'll stabilize the road, put a top coat over it so we don't make it worse for the winter, and then come back in the spring and pick up the project again. So, that's basically the recommendation that you have from the engineer. And the contractor can start almost immediately.
Couple of questions. The, and I, I mean, I've, all the water lines up in the cul-de-sac were repaired at this point?
Not all of them. All the ones that broke were, we have a few that we want to be proactive and do first, so that we're reducing the chance of them popping-
Yeah. Oh, absolutely.
After they get started. So, yeah, there are a few from Sunrise Circle up that didn't pop when all the others did that we're going to go ahead and do anyway.
Yeah, let me narrow my scope of the question. The cul, when I say the cul-de-sac, I mean, have these houses all been done?
Yes, and they're going down-
And down, like down to practically here, right?
I think like another five or six down there would-
So, pretty much all of these have been fixed?
Yeah.
And the fixtures that we put on, I'm sorry.
Even a little farther back.
Okay.
I think it kind of started in here, looped all the way around.
Yeah.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Calvin, it's these here that didn't pop yet that we're going to do-
Yes.
And put the new bands on.
Yeah.
And, I mean, the new bands are a much, much better band than the bands that were on there. The bands that were on there were like straps, where these bands are-
They were radiating.
Exactly. And these are like a significant band. I mean, it's, you know, a much better band. And we could probably anticipate even on the plastic line that they should last a lot longer, even factoring in the flex and such from the line that probably caused a lot of the issues that we're seeing now.
Right.
So, it would be fair to say that, you know, obviously, the pipe, there's a fair chance the pipe could last a lot longer.
Yes.
And the new bands should last far longer than the old bands did.
Yes.
So, really, the, you know, the idea of replacing it with metal pipe isn't, it was more precautionary. It wasn't that we, you know, that it had to happen. We just felt more comfortable with the metal pipe than the plastic pipe.
Right.
Okay. So, given that, we can say that at least, you know, this section is done. Because even the three-inch line that ran over to these houses was all done.
Yes.
Yeah. I know we're talking about paving, fixing everything and paving from Sunrise Circle all the way up. But the real damage to the road was at least this section is where it's like cratered.
Starting in the-
Yeah. Well, you also have what they, you know, we always, that elbow there, that midway point.
They dug that out, but it didn't actually erode from underneath.
No, but we dug it up.
Right.
We dug up, and there's big craters here.
Yeah.
But that was checking to make sure the buttresses holding that curve were in good.
But I'm just thinking, the difference between what happened here and what happened here is we had brown water running out of the street for like days.
Yeah.
Down here. So, there's clearly a lot of erosion underground.
Yeah.
Where this shouldn't have any erosion underground, because that was preventative in nature.
Right.
Right.
And I guess what I'm getting at is, this is the area where we could get into much greater problems realistically.
That's where we could open the, and-
Pandora's Box.
We don't know what's there until we get into it. That's what he's talking about.
Yeah. Now, so just to fully understand the bid, and we're talking about repairing the remaining connections, dealing with whatever problems are down on this end, and repaving the whole section of it.
Well, redoing the entire roadway up to that-
Right, rebuilding the entire roadway, right.
Rebuilding the entire roadbed.
Would it be, I'm just trying to think of, you know, how can we, because I think you still want to repair those connections one way or another.
We're doing those other connections that haven't popped.
Be proactive.
Yeah.
Because if we don't, then-
They're just waiting, they're just waiting for the worst time-
This winter, we'll be out there, you know, in zero-degree weather again, fixing connections.
And maybe digging up our new section if we don't do it now.
But it's reasonable to expect that, as poor as the base is, that it's in better condition than this end.
Yeah, if I know where you're heading with in the question, my only concern would be, is to fix those remaining connections, you're digging down a big area of all that base and you're disturbing it.
Right.
And what made that base hold up was the fact that it was never disturbed. And so, the concern is, once you start disturbing it every 20 feet, are you not putting the underbed of that road up on that end essentially in the same condition that the underbed is in the cul-de-sac?
That was the question, okay.
Yeah. So, that would be my concern. If we weren't going to disturb anything, period, I'd say, yeah, just take care of this end and overlay the rest. But if we're going to fix the service connections, if we're going in and disturbing something that already appears to be unstable to begin with.
And one other thing, this project has taken a long time, and we apologize to the residents of Ryan Drive. But one other thing that we were waiting to see was, as time went on this summer, all this section here that got undermined by the water seeking, it's like creating an ant farm tunnels underneath, didn't settle or collapse anymore over, throughout the spring, summer, and the fall. So, we're feeling a little better, more, you know, confidence that we're not going to hit that Pandora's Box under there, but it could happen.
The eight or seven inches that already sunk is probably done.
So, we're, yeah, whatever could have sunk, you know, and caved in, probably would have happened by now. And that was, that was some of the logic into this taking so long. Plus, trying to find another way to do it, because we knew it needed to be fixed right. It was going to be expensive. But we're talking about a road that we want to last another 30, 40 years without-
I was just looking, was there a happy median?
Calvin, you're confident that if-
No, there's no confidence. Not with Ryan Drive and the conditions.
I'm saying if you, if we waited and we did this top coat, are you sure that, not sure, but are you frankly leaning towards that they're still going to come back and say the exact same thing they said to us the last time we went to them to try to get grants, USDA? Is the likelihood there that they're going to say the exact same thing?
To be honest with you, the way the game, and I should, it sounds derogatory when I say a game. The way the system operates is that until we solve the water issues with the town, which has an impact on rates, they're always going to view our rates as not, my opinion would be, they would view our rates as not qualifying for grant money. If we resolve the water issue and get the rates adjusted as a result of that, they would most likely, and this is what they basically said to us, they would give us a grant money to do the whole thing. So, it all depends on the timing too of resolving the, resolving the overall water issue of the town, which, and to elaborate or to get closer to what you're suggesting, if we did the $49,000 repair, there's no guarantee that we would have the- if we did the $49,000 repair, there's no guarantee that we would have the... I shouldn't say the funds, because we're talking about doing the funds now. But there's no guarantee, A, that we would get grant money from USDA to do it. There is the risk that the damage could become much more severe and we potentially lose the eight-inch water main that's in there.
And no matter what, you're losing that $49,000 because you're gonna tear up the road anyways.
Yeah, you're gonna tear it up.
So, does Commissioner Althanreath want to make a motion to approve this bid?
Well, we need to. It's expensive. And Calvin, can you kind of elaborate? Are we gonna be able to come up with this kind of money?
This kind of money's not budgeted.
Yeah.
For sure. We're about, because we were operating under the idea that we would... We're going to be getting, when we did the budget process, we talked about getting the grant money and at the very least doing a repair that was expected to be much less. So, we have reserve funds and we can transfer money from reserve funds to do it. The short answer is, yes, we could do it, but it's gonna take a radical budget adjustment to be able to do it.
And when we did budget last June, that was before this happened. So, this is one of those things that happens in the wintertime. You can't plan, really plan for it or budget for it. It happens. We can't expect the residents of Ryan Drive to drive on that road, which is terrible. I'm surprised that this audience is not full of those residents right now. They've been very patient with us. We've got all these other issues, you know, going on in town that we've been working on as this project has always had a step being done each week, all throughout the spring and the summer up to this point. And we've all kind of discussed it. It's a high price, but it's pay me now or pay me a whole lot more later. The longer we wait, the worse it gets, more it's gonna cost. I think we are more of the mindset to, let's do it right. This, you know, if we do it cheaply and try to shortcut it, it's gonna come back and bite us. So, gentlemen, I make a motion tonight that we approve the $466,731.25 for Lindstrom to go ahead with the repairs to Ryan Drive. Let's keep our fingers crossed that they don't find anything bad and that hopefully it can come in under that estimate. And we'll keep everybody posted as it goes on, what's happening up there. But the residents of Ryan Drive deserve the road to be repaired.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes.
Hi, Mayor, the next item on my report is, I was asked to put a resolution together from Commissioner Althanreath had asked for, he circulated an email a while back. And this is a resolution that can be tabled for the next meeting or it can be voted on tonight. If you want, I could read the resolution for you.
After you read it, Calvin, I'd like to just add a couple of brief comments about it before we move forward.
Right. The resolution... Resolution 2015-08, a resolution titled "Directives for Elected Officials' Stifling and Compensation", where the Town of Rising Sun, that's the standard boilerplate language. The third whereas, Chapter Two of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Rising Sun, Article Four, Section 2-401, titled "Salary for the Mayor" and Section 2-402, titled "Salary for the Commissioners", establishes the concept of a stiffen or compensation for the mayor and commissioners. This stiffen or compensation is to be set by resolution of the mayor and commissioners. And whereas the ordinance sections noted above and any previous resolutions are silent and unclear on what is considered a meeting, et cetera, and when the stiffen or compensation is permissible. And whereas the town started a precedent many years ago of having any and all meetings or activities of an elected official while performing in the role of an elected official eligible for compensation or issuance of a stiffen. And whereas the mayor and commissioners of the Town of Rising Sun wish to be more mindful of the fairness of this compensation or stiffen when it involves meetings or activities in which the town is paid for meals. Therefore, being enacted and resolved that the mayor and commissioners of the Town of Rising Sun have hereby established an internal directive in order to address and clarify the intent of the existing policy, that an elected official that attends a meeting or participates in an activity in which a meal is provided and paid for by the town, that the stiffen or compensation previously awarded to the elected official shall no longer be permitted. And be it further resolved that the mayor and commissioners of the Town of Rising Sun passed, approved, and adopted this resolution on the 27th day of October 2015, that can be modified to today's date if you want to act on it tonight.
Commissioner Althanreath, do you have your comment?
Yes, what this basically is, I'm asking that my fellow board members, that we take a pay cut, basically. When we have, you know, with all the money, like I said, we just asked to spend $466,000. So, when we attend some of these events that the town has to pay for meals, we're not in this for the money anyway. We are not politicians, we're up here to work for our community and to help, you know, guide and direct our community. So, if the town has to pay out money for a meal at an event, say, is the Hartford County, Cecil County Chapter, MML quarterly meetings, we will not charge for that meeting. Or sometimes Commissioner Warnock, myself have attended the Chamber of Commerce events and we have to pay for meal. So, I don't think it's good for us to...
We have had elected officials in the past that have charged for it.
So, in order to save some money, because if you did that, you know, five times, the money that we charge for an event, times every time we go, that can add up to a few hundred bucks. And we need to say, you know, watch the pennies and the dollars takes care of themselves, is my motto. And this will help us to put some money back into the town's account. So, I'm just asking everybody to take this pay cut. You know, we attend these events anyway and the town puts out money for us to go. The events that we go to, everybody, it kind of does the same thing. We go there to discuss what other communities are doing, what's happening in our community, and network and get information, and this will save the town a little money. So, I'm just asking everybody, join in with me and take this pay cut.
I mean, I'm not gonna say that the food is excellent at some of these things because it's really not. However, I do support Commissioner Althanreath's resolution. So, if you would like to vote on it tonight, I don't think Commissioner Warnock is gonna have an issue with it either.
Right, so I motion that we accept Resolution 2015-08 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? The only thing that I would say is, I completely agree with what Commissioner Althanreath said. We have had officials that in the past, when they've driven to some of these events, which some of them are far away, you know, we've had fall conferences in Cambridge, they have to drive to, yeah, you get the meal, but you have to drive to Cambridge. And officials have charged for them in the past. So, you know, to take a cut and to tighten our own belt, I think is responsible. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes. Thank you. Town Administrator, does that conclude your report this evening?
Unfortunately, no, Mr. Mayor. The other thing that I want to bring everybody up to speed on, because it's something that we're asked a lot, during the hurricane or any recent storm events, there's a lot of things that the staff does in preparation for that. If you remember in the past, we've always taken the stand that just by the nature of our proximity to the bulk of Cecil County, we are up here on the northern end. And so, when big events like a hurricane or a big event like that hit the county, we sort of get cut off from that. And so, we've always taken a very proactive stand of making sure that we're alert and aware of it. And so, I just wanted to let everybody know, although this last hurricane didn't amount to anything, we meet, the staff and I, we meet, some elected officials meet, and we have created and have elaborated over the years on a community checkpoint, of which the police officers, every hour, an hour and a half, go to all these different locations. Public Works employees take shifts during the daytime. Myself, the mayor's been out there in the past, checking these places off, what time were there, who was there doing the inspection and what we noted. And it's a way of us keeping up to date or keeping abreast of what's going on. And it's also proven to be very beneficial when a state of emergency is declared, a federal state of emergency is declared and FEMA funds are available. This has led to the town getting about $17,000 over the last couple of events, simply because we had everything documented. And so, all the salary and time spent has been reimbursed to the Town of Rising Sun. The next thing is the sewer plant update. As I reported before, USDA has signed off on the plant. MDE is doing a final sign-off of the plant next week. In the month of September, we averaged about 135,000 gallons of treatment per day. And so, that goes along with what we've reported before, that the town's done a very good job of dealing with loss of water. The town used to report water usage of about 230,000 gallons a day. Right now, we look at our water usage to be about 170,000 gallons a day. With some of the water going into watering grass, evaporation, all kinds of different things, where the water doesn't go into the sewer, we're doing about 135,000 gallons of treatment in the month of September. And there were some portions of September and late August that were very wet months. So, we're not having, you know, some of the issues we've had in the past have been resolved. Roadwork on South Queen Street between the church and Armstrong will take place tomorrow. The state is going to be doing some pothole repair on that stretch of road. And then, our Public Works crew is gonna be out there trying to fix a water service connection that runs under the street over to Armstrong. And we have the ability of, instead of digging up the street, we have a contractor who can push the line underneath the street, but it's still gonna require the road to be closed in one direction. So, there will be flaggers out there and hopefully the project will only take about a day to complete. A reminder to the Board of Commissioners and Mayor that we still have vacancies on the Planning Commission, the Ethics Board. And with the upcoming election, we have various members of the Planning Commission and Appeals Board that are running for election. So, that's, we could potentially have continued vacancies in there. The other question I wanted to get some direction from the Board is, over the last couple of years, the town has gotten out of the business of selling dog licenses here at the Town of Rising Sun. Does the town want to continue in just directing people to the county for that or do you want to bring it back in-house? The staff would prefer to keep it going to the county. So, if no one disagrees with that, we'll notify the county that we'll still direct people to them. If you remember about, maybe around July, I think the mayor had introduced a vendor who would come in under the energy retrofit program. After a lot of delays and that contractor, you know, it all getting lost, they come back to us. But now, the grants provided by the state or Delmar, I'm not sure, have dried up. So, if we still want to do that conversion, which is about 36 lighting fixtures with perceived savings of like $500, $600 a year in energy costs, it's still gonna cost the town, and we're not sure of the proposal, so we ballparked. It appears to be about a one-time $800 fee, which is basically $22 per fixture, to pay for the fixture and the labor to put it in. So, from a cost standpoint, it's $22 a fixture, which includes the purchase. But we're no longer getting it for free on it. So, I want to get some direction from the Board. They want to go ahead and update the lighting fixtures to make the town, to make the town hall building more energy efficient, which saves about $500, $600 a year.
I don't want to kick the can down the road, but can we push that off till the next meeting so that we can like discuss, because there was another vendor?
Okay.
So, yeah, see if there's any opportunity elsewhere. I mean, it's not gonna change much in two weeks, is it?
No, it's not.
Then let's just, that's the next meeting.
Property maintenance code, we still need to get some feedback on some of the suggested language. And I'm not exaggerating when I tell you the amount of complaints that we get on property maintenance and the chief shares it too. We're getting a lot of complaints about generally the maintenance, the lack of maintenance of properties, specifically abandoned properties that are centered around foreclosures. And we, the property maintenance code does include a section on requiring banks to register those properties with the Town of Rising Sun, which will motivate them hopefully to move the project along quicker. But it would also reimburse the town for its expenses of the police or code enforcement having to deal with those outstanding issues. We're also still getting a lot of complaints about abandoned vehicles. And we're starting to see an uptick in renters complaining about lack of repair and maintenance upkeep on the part of landlords. And I've had a discussion with the fire company regarding some incidents that they've had and I've gone into, and some of our rental properties are really scary, as I've reported before. You know, we're not talking about McKinley Apartments in Mount Street. We're talking about the standalone residential rentals. We have some that are really scary. And we're starting to get complaints from tenants regarding that. I'm gonna save the next part of my report for the next meeting because it was fire prevention month and there was a video that I talked to the fire company about planes. So, we'll save that for the next meeting. From a development standpoint, the sewer plant has really triggered a lot of positive feedback for the Town of Rising Sun. We continue to get a lot of inquiries from developers, builders, and business owners. Bigfoot, the one thing I wanted to clarify, there's been a question or concern about the time related to the demolition of Bigfoot. The permit was secured and issued on September 16th. The demolition took place on October 7th. That's not a delay on the part of the Town of Rising Sun, that was weather-related and then getting their ducts lined up. So, there's this perception that the town delayed the demolition of Bigfoot. That's not the case. The old restaurant down on Ryan Drive, I reported earlier that a young couples come in that wanna do some extensive renovations to the building. I met with them today, they are going forward. They have, it looks like they are going to purchase the property. They're looking to put some really nice outdoor deck seating on the outside of the building. And they do have a liquor license, so they're looking at having it sort of like a tavern-type setting where there is a bar there, you can come in, get a drink, wait for your dinner or whatever. So, it sounds like they're looking to put a nice, you know, quasi upscale restaurant at that location. I've also had a catering business that's come in under short notice and is aggressively looking to renovate a property on Buckley Avenue to put a catering business in there, right next to Jerry's Automotive up in there. They're doing a lot of renovations to the building also. There's a custom auto body shop. If you remember, I spoke to you about the Crab Shack wanting to relocate down to Spicers. After our last town meeting, I had a phone call from somebody who read the articles in the paper about the things that are happening. And he wants to relocate a custom auto body shop behind Spicers. Yes, it is right across from Harrington Auto Body, but they're technically two separate businesses. Harrington deals with your car after you crash it. He deals with it when you wanna put bigger mufflers, exhaust, or, you know, sport it up or rebuild an old antique car, that's what he specializes in.
Chief deals with once you put the bigger muffler on.
Yes. So, there's an auto body shop that's very serious about moving in there. And basically, resolving the sewer plant issue, I mean, we all knew how big that was, but it's actually even taken me by surprise as to how many people that are positive about this and the inquiries that we are getting as a result of this. There is a little bit of energy, you know, from people that have been stymied with business and stuff.
I think it's so important that we make sure that we put it out there, that we are open for business.
Yes.
You know, and we want you to come here.
Yes, absolutely. Considering the fact that this sewer plant issue can be traced all the way back to the mid-1980s, when the Town of Rising Sun in like 1985 was issued a letter told that they were in nonconformance and they were gonna be put in a consent decree. So, even going all the way back to 1985, the town has been in and out of issues. That's basically 30 years.
I just wanted to say I wasn't born yet, just throwing it out there.
To get this resolved. And I want to thank the residents of Valley View on behalf of the Public Works employees and the contractor. It was a little bit, you know, angst on how that was gonna go down, but the residents really jumped up, stepped up quickly and got the cars moved. And the contractor was able to get in and out of there in essentially about an hour and a half, two hours. and a half, two hours' time. So that is a testament to what can happen when the town and the residents work together hand in hand to get something resolved. That's my report.
Thank you, Town Administrator. Next up is my report, and I'm pretty sure that nobody really wants to hear what I have to say, so I'm going to keep it pretty brief. I judged the homecoming hallways at the Rising Sun High School. I had an excellent time there. It was myself and Sheriff Adams, as well as Chief Peterson, and it was great to be able to come out and see the innovation that they offered in those hallways. The chief, you know, we were amazed by what they came up with. It was a Disney theme, and each different class did a Disney theme, and they made, they made these art displays by hand. I posted a lot of pictures on my mayor Facebook site, but the kids did an excellent job. I love having a great relationship with our high schools, with our middle schools, and with our elementary schools. Tomorrow, this will be my first visit to Calvert Elementary. They want me to come, and they want me to speak about my position as mayor and what I do there, so I'm excited about going there. I also wanted to say that, again this year, we have tenet our lights pink in honor of breast cancer awareness. We also have an outdoor art display that was made by Shelley LaCher, and it is outside, and you can actually write on it and leave messages of hope for people that are battling breast cancer, or if you want to write in memory of someone that may, you may know that has lost the battle with breast cancer. I only wear these crazy shoes once a year, and that is during the month of October. And that is in honor of breast cancer awareness. Every 19 seconds somewhere in the world, someone is being diagnosed with breast cancer awareness. Early detection can save your life, so remember that. I also wanted to say that our Spooktacular is coming very soon. It's October the 24th. It's from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Obviously, the reenactment will also be going on at that time, and we will be sending people down there as well. We want the reenactors, even if they want to come up to Spooktacular and visit, they can. Obviously, they're going to be in costume. This is a costumed event. So I'm very excited about some of the activities that we are having this year. They are definitely, we're coming together with a lot of really neat kids activities. We just, today I just got a phone call. We added sumo wrestling, so the kids will be able to do sumo wrestling out there on the streets. It's going to be a great time. I also wanted to say that myself and Chief Peterson will be attending a community policing seminar. The Maryland Municipal League have asked us to come and speak to other elected officials throughout the state about our relationship and how we work together. Obviously, there is an age difference. They want us to speak on that. They want us to speak on how we work together. So, so I will be speaking in Cambridge about that. And I also wanted to say, this is one thing that I've been asked multiple times, Halloween is on Halloween. We do do trick-or-treating on Halloween, and that is when it is going to be. It will be from 6:00 o'clock to 8:00 o'clock at night, and you are able to give out candy to the kids. So I look forward to Halloween. We're not changing the date on Halloween. So, Historical Preservation Commission, did you already cover that, Mr. Mommy? Okay. Any old business?
I got a little thing.
Any new business? Commissioner Althanrye.
First, before I forget it, because I usually do, Tom, do we know what night we're going to do our next planning and zoning meeting? It would normally fall on Monday of the election, so can-
Yeah, I put an email out. We got no answers back, so I had planned to discuss it tonight after the meeting.
Okay.
Because we do have to change today.
Yeah. I'm available the rest of the week, except for Wednesday night.
Well, I suggested 20 and 21 as possible dates for the meeting.
The 20th work for you guys? Joanne? Joanne? Okay, so we can, since we're all pretty much here, we can-
It's like you just set a date.
The 20th?
20th is fine for me.
What time?
7:00. We were, but I think it's time to move it back to, it's spring schedule time of 7:00.
Okay, then we can officially announce that the next P&amp;Z meeting will be next Tuesday, the 20th, at 7:00 p.m. Back to streets and sidewalk stuff, you know, we've covered most of what's going on with the big event right now, which is the Ryan Drive, the line painting down in Valley on Louise Court. Glad that went as well as it could. We did get, Calvin and I got beat up pretty bad, though, by a few residents who felt inconvenienced for having to move their vehicles. But, you know, sometimes we, we're going to be, and if we come down there and do some other stuff, you know, it's going to require moving things around. If you were painting rooms in your house, you've got to move furniture and pile it on another one. So we did get beat up pretty bad, but I did get a lot of thank-yous for it. Brenda, thanks for mentioning that tonight, so.
Just send them down to 330.
All right, you heard that. It's on tape.
[laughing]
One thing I wanted to cover tonight, and this is not a retaliation or anything, but Mr. Fisher mentioned at the last meeting, and I'm sorry he's not here, that he had to leave to go watch the Democrats tonight, that we checked with Frederick Ward, because they were the engineer on Ryan Drive at that time, and told me to check my facts before I run my mouth. So, you know, I want to go back and check, because he, you know, Mr. Fisher's been around a while. He does know some things, but he was correct. Frederick Ward was the engineer at that time. So we started looking to see if there's anything we could hold them accountable for, but we couldn't. Frederick Ward was right on top of this thing. So I've got a few things I just want to run down. For those residents who want to know, you know, we just asked everybody to dig in their pockets for $466,000, and this has been a long process throughout the summer. You know, everybody thought we should have paved that road right away, but this was more in-depth than I ever thought it would have been. At the last town meeting, Mr. Fisher suggested check the facts. So in response to Mr.'s request, we went back, checked with Frederick Ward to check out the facts. I think it's very important to note that the town has been researching who is responsible for this issue since the first street started failing back in February of this year. That was a reason for my comments at the previous town meeting. We reviewed the records from roughly 1985 to 1995, and it's very clear during that period, Frederick Ward repeatedly identified issues with Ryan Drive development and notified the town of those issues, specifically conditions of the road construction, bank gravel used on this project. Most notable were the issues, most notable were issues where the developer proceeded with work without proper inspection from Frederick Ward. So we have, we found documents from Mr. Ward notifying the town that in place of bank run gravel to be used as a base for this reference road expansion. Completeness of our inspections is compromised due to the absence of any inspection during placement and working of the material. So they did a lot of work so that it couldn't be inspected, and notification sent to the town. Frederick Ward identified several issues of substandard work with the recommendations of correction and/or removal. We have documents that on February 28th, 1990, a visual inspection of the bitumous concrete paving was performed on roadways in the development of Sunrise Estates. Sunrise Circle and Ryan Drive east of Sunrise Circle were two roads that were inspected at this time. The purpose of this inspection, as requested by the town of Rising Sun, was determined if these roadways were acceptable to be released to ownership of the town from the developer. Neither of the two road subgrades were proof rolled and approved by a qualified technician or engineer prior to paving. Sunrise Circle was proof rolled in December 1988 with Mr. McCox of our office present to observe the procedure. During this procedure, several soft areas were noted, and Mr. Tom Montgomery was informed that these areas would need to be undercut and backfilled with material compacted in accordance with specifications. Mr. Montgomery indicated this would be done and would call our office so we could observe the roadway being proof rolled again prior to paving. Our office was not contacted, and the reinspection was not performed. And once again, these are documents from Frederick Ward notifying the town of what was being done at that time. Frederick Ward identified those concerns in letters to the elected body and town administrator at that time. The town acknowledged the concerns raised by Frederick Ward, but still chose to release escrow funds that were held against the developer, which essentially removed any incentive for the developer to fix those issues. We have a letter from January 15th, 1986. The town has decided to release those funds cited. However, the road is not acceptable as is to the town. The town will not accept the deed to the road, nor include the road in the town's street system until the town, until the road meets town specifications. A copy of our engineer report is enclosed. So that goes on, that the town administrator at that time acknowledged issues raised by Frederick Ward. However, a letter was sent to the developer stating that he did not have to comply with all those issues raised by Frederick Ward. And we have a letter from the at-time town administrator, Mr. Bob Fisher. I have discussed your request concerning comments 1 through 4 of Frederick Ward Association's letter on the road, water, sewer, and storm drainage design for Sunrise Estates continuation with the reviewer. Comments 1 through 3 can be disregarded, and those are the comments from Frederick Ward of issues that needed to be fixed. Comment 4 should be complied with as the distance shown between manholes is between 600 and 700 feet, which is not consistent with the design requirements. So he pretty much released the funds that was held, the escrow, which we could have taken that money and went back and fixed it. He told him, don't worry about stuff that Frederick Ward has identified. So what appears to be evident in our review of the numerous files is a continuing theme of the town engineer, Frederick Ward, identifying discrepancies, the town administration elected body failing to hold the developer accountable. And furthermore, we are not the first town administration elected body left to deal with this issue. Then later on in 1995, the mayor and town administrator at that time were also trying to correct the issues that previously went unsolved. So these are the facts that I was told not to run my mouth unless I had them. We have them. Frederick Ward notified the town numerous times of work not being done properly, not acceptable, and, you know, I don't know what he's trying to do. Is he trying to cover, is he trying to get elected to represent the residents or the mistakes that were made in the past that are right here, you know, in the town's records, proving that Frederick Ward told the town at that time, he's not doing this, they're not doing that, the road's not being built properly, and they went ahead and let the road be built. So just for those of you residents who were here and have viewed the video at that time, we did go back and check our facts, and our facts show that Mr. Ward did act accordingly in the interest of the town, but the town administrator at that time, town managers, they were called, neglected to hold that developer accountable. So that brings us around to this point now, and us residents living here now are facing that problem, as well as the same type of issue that we're working with over in Brian's Grace, Maple Heights, Rising Hills, and Summer Hill. All these developments in here that were not done properly, they put their name on them, and they don't stand behind them and think that they shouldn't be held accountable for them. So that's just some information to go along with the statements from two weeks ago. There was one other thing that I wanted to say, but I've gone and forgot it, because it's gotten so late. But I think that's all I got. If I remember it all, I have to raise my hand.
Raise your hand. Yeah, you can just say it. Raise your hand, please. Commissioner Warnock.
Actually, given the late hour, I'm going to keep it a little bit brief, but I do want to address one persistent thing I keep hearing coming up in the town. I've heard from a few people now, this rumor that somehow the town delayed Bigfoot. So I actually called out, I reached out to Milton, the owner of Bigfoot, and said, look, are we holding you up? I mean, if so, I want to get it resolved. This, you know, we've committed, back on the day of the fire, we committed that we would do everything possible to get Bigfoot back in operation as soon as possible to, you know, under the circumstances, to get it moved forward. And Milton advised me, and he said he's actually received a number of calls on the same topic. He doesn't know where the rumor's coming from. It's a persistent topic, but the town has been, has been as helpful as could be. They have reached out consistently, and he said, actually, his exact words were, the town administrator has been fantastic in trying to get this resolved. That the delays in Bigfoot being able to be rebuilt, or torn down, actually, so that they could continue to rebuild, was due to the insurance company and investigations that basically every individual, or every electrician that's done work on that property in the last five years was investigated and interviewed by the insurance company. That process takes a long time. Each, each of those electricians, obviously, are going to want to bring a lawyer along because they're under investigation. They could be held liable for the cost. So that, basically, long story short, given the late hour, that, you know, the process took what it did because the process is what it is in a large loss like that. They're proceeding now that the town has been actually almost pushing to, you know, help, and it's actually the opposite of the rumor out there. So I just wanted to address that. If, you know, I hear anything else, I'll make sure to keep everybody informed, but that I'll just, the only thing we have, real simple, we're looking at a couple of projects, working with the high school and middle school for service hours. The train down at Richardson Park, I looked at that the other day. We did a little repair work to it, and we're going to work on getting that repainted, because I know the train's got, it's been here a few years, about 20 years or so. And I know at this point, I think I found invoices from like the 90s on it, so.
That's not the original.
That's not the original. This is, this is-
This train was rebuilt and built by a Boy Scout and donated to the town.
It's a Boy Scout project, so I'm not going to let it rot. Okay, we'll go with that. [laughing] Well, it has significance to the town one way or another, so we want to make sure that we're properly maintaining it, that we're being good custodians of the, of the, you know, assets and the property of the town. So we're working on that, and I'm also getting inquiries about the roof on the one building. We're, should be getting out and working on that here, hopefully in a few weeks. We'll, we'll get moving on that project, too. So, and with that, that is, oh, and the Arts Council event on Saturday went really well. The, it was actually pretty well attended. There was a number of, it's actually great. I think, Mr. Mommy, you can attest, the, you know, the museum, the historic museums had more people go through it in the last two openings, you know, working with the Arts Council than probably in the last two years.
I neglected to mention that in my report, but we have changed the hours of the museum to coincide with the Arts Council's second Saturday showtime. I like to call it showtime, because that's what it is. So we're open 4 to 7, the same hours that the Arts Council is having their fair, and we've kind of meshed the two together, and it seems to be working well.
Yeah, I think it's worked out very well, and I, you know, we've had pretty good attendance, and I'm excited to see those events continue to be well-attended. So with that, that is my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Warnock. Is there anything else to come for the board this evening? Town Administrator, do you have anything else?
No.
I'm good. Could I get a motion?
A motion, we adjourn.
Suck it. All in favor?
Aye.
You can adjourn.